I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting of July 15th, 2025 to order and ask everyone to put their cell phones on silent. The invocation be led by Vice Mayor Schroeder. The Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Heck.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve the City of Apache Junction. Please give us wisdom and clarity to help keep this city thriving. We ask that you keep a watchful eye out for our first responders, including the men and women over the world and our military in your aim. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Present.
Councilmember Cross?
Here.
Councilmember Heck?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Nussar?
Present.
Councilmember Soller?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Consent agenda. As a reminder, all items under the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request will be made prior to approving the consent agenda and will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion for a consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
And that the award of contract public sector personnel consultants, Inc., and the authorization for the mayor to sign the contract and city manager authorization to sign the contract for M.T. Tanner Construction be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Nussar?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Thank you. I don't have any awards or proclamations. Regional intergovernment updates. Does anyone have anything?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. We did started out the Fourth of July celebration with a tribute fireworks for our lost officer. And you want to show that now?
Is it? Okay. This one?
Volume.
But before we do, we're going to pause here to honor one of our own. The Apache Junction Police Department and the City of Apache Junction are mourning the loss of Officer Gabriel Fazio, badge number 409, who gave his life in the line of duty on June 8th. Officer Fazio served this community with pride, courage, and heart. And in his memory and recognition of his sacrifice, we dedicate the first few fireworks of the night to him. At this time, we ask everyone to please rise and join us in a moment of silence. Let us stand together with AJPD and remember.
Thank you for showing that, the aspect on it. Then I also attended a cadet graduation for our police department. And one of the, this was in Mesa at their academy. And we now have a new officer, Officer Joshua Ship, who was, well, he's kind of standing next to me in the front row there beside Chief Pulley. He is our new officer, has just started up, completed his training, and is anxious to get going. Welcome aboard. Put my glasses back on. City managers report.
Bryant Powell, City Manager. I have a couple of items I want to report, but before we start, I wanted to mention that thank you to the Parks Recreation Department for helping make that happen. Really important that we'll throughout this year and forever reflect on the great life of Officer Fazio. You've already seen a sign go up in the Adopta Street Program. There will be other areas in the city where we will continue to honor his legacy. For my report tonight, Matt, for the next slide, I want to remind everyone, now, we're going through the third summer here and we really do need the rain. And so any prayers and thoughts that go the right way would be really beneficial. We do want our community to be prepared for all of the phone numbers, and we're pushing this information out regularly throughout this season. We just started this last week, potentially this week, there is some moisture coming in, but we will be having sandbags like we have before and in conjunction with the fire district and working with them so residents can go and get those filled and be prepared. But we will be continuing to keep this word out on where to reach out for hotlines for our Apache Junction residents. Next slide. Again, huge, huge evening every, every year. We're so proud of the opportunity to be in a free land and to be able to, once a year, come together as a community and to reflect on our freedoms. And I want to thank our Parks Department, Police Department, Public Works Department, and everyone that comes together and your support of continuing to have a night like that. And so we have, you know, so many sponsors, so many vendors that come together and help help make it just a wonderful, wonderful night. And then we often say sometimes we don't have as much going on in the summer. I would say our great Parks Department figures out ways to do programming, and this is an evidence of that. This last Friday, you know, unique way to participate and get out and get out of the house and enjoy a movie and be with the family. So wanted to share that with the, with the community today. It's our family night, movie night, and thank, thank everyone for the participation. And that, that's a separate event from Fourth of July, obviously. As far as current events tonight, no, no items here. And Your Honor, we can turn it back over to you.
Good, thank you. Announcements of current events? Nothing? Okay. All right, public hearing. Consideration for an applicant for a new Series 6 bar license, bar liquor license for Dutchman County Barbecue. Evy.
Thank you, Your Honor. On June 12th, 2025, the Arizona Department of Liquor License received a new application for the Dutchman's Country Barbecue located at 1650 North Apache Trail. This is submitted by Agent Camilla Alicon. She's representing the owners of the establishment. The applicant was notified of the public hearing and a posting was done on June 18th at the establishment to notify the public. Correspondence related to inspections of the premises for safety and code compliant matters were received from the Police Department, Building and Safety, Planning and Zoning, and the Superstition Fire and Medical District. All four entities find compliance with the inspection requirements. We did receive notification from Development Services noting that the liquor license application could go through the process, but of course, until the business is complete and they've received their certificate of occupancy, no business or no liquor would be sold at the establishment. So at this time, all four entities are recommending, recommendation to the Arizona State Liquor Licensing Control Department.
Any discussion among council? I will now open the public hearing. There's a five-minute time limit with one-minute warning you will hear. Please state your name and address for the record. Anyone like to speak on this?
Andre Meek, 1327 South Baldair Road here in AJ. Mr. Mayor, council. The first restaurant I ate at when I came to visit AJ was Tilly's, or Philly's, excuse me, which was a barbecue. And at that time, after that, it closed down, and I've been waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting. And I'm just dying to drink a beer at the new barbecue place, so I'm all for it. That's all I got to say.
Anyone else? I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that the application for a new Series 6 bar liquor license for Dutchman's Country Barbecue located at 1615 North Apache Trail, Apache Junction, Arizona, be recommended to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Cross?
Looking forward to having another place to ride my horse and have dinner and a drink. Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nussar?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Hey, Darryl, can you get a DUI riding a horse?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you can. Consideration, consideration of application for a permanent extension for premises for First Water Cocktail Bar. Evy.
Thank you, Your Honor. We received an application for a permanent extension of premises from Justin Evans with the First Water Cocktail Bar located at 1545 East Broadway Avenue. The applicant was notified of this public hearing, and he is here this evening if you have any questions for him. Correspondence was received from, again, our four departments, Apache Junction Police Department, Building and Safety, Planning and Zoning, and Superstition Fire and Medical. With no objections, all four entities recommend approval to the Arizona State Liquor Licensing Control.
Any comments from the council? Okay. I will now open the public hearing. There's a five-minute time limit with a one-minute warning that you will hear. Please state your name and address for the record. Anyone else would like to speak on this? You won't go there? Okay, I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a permanent extension of premises for First Water Cocktail Bar located at 1545 West Broadway Avenue, Suite 101, Apache Junction, Arizona, be recommended to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nussar?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Presentation and discussion for public hearing for the CDBG and SSP funds. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We're going to invite Angela Gatto up from CAG, who has been helping us through the CDBG process. She's going to go through the mandatory items that need to be stated for this public hearing. And at the right moment, I'll let you know some ideas of what staff is suggesting that we use the funds for, and then we'll also solicit public input for any other ideas. But I'll turn the rest of the time over to Angela for the time being.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Angela Gatto, and I am the Administrative and Special Projects Coordinator for Central Arizona Governments. Tonight's hearing is for input regarding possible projects for consideration for the 2025 CDBG grant cycle. The City of Apache Junction is expected to receive approximately $156,800 in federal fiscal year 2025 CDBG regional account funds from the Arizona Department of Housing. All proposed regional projects must meet one of three national objectives, which are benefit low to moderate income persons in the area, alleviate slum and blight in the community, or address an urgent need. Examples of possible uses include public infrastructure, community facilities, housing, and public services. The City of Apache Junction may also apply for approximately $750,000 in state special projects funding. Eligible state projects, special projects include public facilities and improvements, community facilities, housing, and engineering or architectural plans. Only projects that are identified tonight can be brought forward for the next public hearing when you will make a decision on which project you would like to apply for. At this time, we can take suggestions from staff or the public or the council for those projects.
Mr. Mayor, if all right, I'll run through the four or five projects that staff suggested.
Yes.
And are these both combined, Angela, or are we taking?
Separate.
Separate, okay.
Yes.
So I'll probably mention these twice tonight because we don't know which ones might be eligible for which project right now. But from Public Works, the Apache VS subdivision pedestrian rehab, which would be the repair of some sidewalk rants and bringing them up to modern standards. The Palm Springs drainage improvements, which would include curb and gutter along some of the roads in that neighborhood. From the library, you're aware that we're currently designing the library reading garden, and some of these funds may be eligible to help with the construction of that public facility. And then from Development Services, they are suggesting as a possibility loan and AC program. This is a program that comes from Mesa, where they've seen some success. In Mesa, well, in Arizona, every year, ACs go out and they keep probably, I think they said about 60 or 70 on hand for residents to come borrow while they get their AC repairs so they don't go in their home without anything to help them. So that's a possibility that staff's suggesting. And then lastly, from Development Services, and we've done this project in the past, an emergency rehab program, which would be patterned after Mesa's as well, and could address household repairs up to $15,000 per household for things like AC heater repair replacement, roof repair, water heater replacement, severe electrical issues, plumbing issues, or accessibility issues for elderly or disabled. So those are some of the projects that staff has made a suggestion to include as, as we prepare our recommendations for city council.
Okay. So this is a list. Any comments from the city council? Yes.
I just want to be really clear on something she said. So that's the first listing we've heard of the suggested items. And you said that the only time that we can approve something is within this council meeting tonight.
So we'll have a second public hearing where the council will select the project, but you cannot bring new projects to that meeting. So everything that you want to consider has to be discussed tonight.
So.
Yeah, not really a heads up on what this list was going to be, kind of short notice to just sit here and think about what that's going to be in the next five minutes.
Okay.
Can we bring another, another chance or opportunity up? There's nothing against more discussion about it, I assume.
I believe there's some timing issues, but Angela could better discuss that.
When is your next council meeting?
So August 4th is the next work session, which would be another opportunity. And then August 5th, and then we have the break for the league conference, and then we're back on the second, first Tuesday in September.
We could do another hearing at the beginning of September if they would like more time to consider projects.
I think we'd like that.
I'll be honest, I, I can't even remember everything he just said. There's another subject that should have been on that list, but if we decide tonight, then we don't, and we decide there's something that we do want on that list, after this meeting, it would be over and we couldn't add it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I inquire?
Yes.
When's your deadline to have all cities and towns basically vote on these types of items?
Applications are due November 1st.
Okay.
So we have a little bit of time to, if we needed to do another first public hearing before the second.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Yeah, it'd definitely be helpful if we had a complete list and maybe an explanation on each of them that was presented tonight, and then a spot if we had any thoughts or just ideas to put in.
Right.
And then maybe we could get that, get that to you ahead of time.
Yes. Yeah, and if the city gets it to me ahead of time, I can also make sure they're all eligible so that when we come for a vote, you only have projects that are eligible for those funds.
So, Your Honor?
Yes.
I guess that was, that was my next question. So these are specific projects that are actually eligible for this money? And it's in how, how, how much latitude do we have on this? Is this a narrow road that we're going down, or is this something that?
CDBG is fairly narrow. You heard the, the three items that she mentioned at the beginning, it basically has to fit, fit in those categories. And CDBG is pretty, pretty narrow focus.
So, but this is something you guys are well-versed in, and you, you understand and you know where these places can go. So these projects you brought up are, aren't just things you just made up.
Correct.
So the ones we researched, you figured out that this is where these places can go.
Correct. So the ones we presented are within that framework. But that doesn't mean those are the only ones. That's kind of the whole point of this night tonight is get input from the community, get input from you. But then we could, we're going to need to do this again and provide a list of what are the ones that could give ideas and then have another, another round of talking about them. But yes, that's correct, Vice Mayor.
The question then, in terms of how specific, like if we were looking at that, the project for providing repairs to homes for disabled and elderly, would we have to have specific properties identified, or would it just be collectively that would be?
It would be, it's for a program, and then there'd be a whole application process in the future to be worked out for those owners who are requesting it to come through. So no, you don't have to decide on the specific properties at this point.
It would give policy that you want those dollars for that type of a program.
Yeah, we've done them in the past.
Yeah, right.
So you'll give us some better parameters of knowing, okay, the first fund was this dollar amount?
Right.
And it's for these kind of things, what its parameters are. And then the $700,000 in the special state funding, we would know what those are. So if there was some kind of item that's on our list that fits, we could add it as a suggestion.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct. And so the state special projects is that one time, little bit bigger amount that we'll bring in. We'll, we'll give you the framework on that, too.
Okay, do we need a motion to put this off to the next?
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll put, we don't need direction. We'll bring it back for the next one.
Okay, all right.
But we do need to go to the public input at this point, I believe, for this first one.
Public hearing, we need a public hearing. But I mean, I was asking for the aspect of, do we need a motion to bring this back again?
No, we'll, we'll.
We'll come back and do the work session and start all over. Just as a reminder, our grants positions that we just filled it, we'll be back to our normal process next time. We're so grateful that we have CAG to help us keep these funds coming in because it's not insignificant amount, you know, $700,000 to $735,000. So we'll keep working on it and come back.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. There's a five-minute time limit with a one-minute warning that you will hear. Please state your name and address for the record. Anyone like to speak on this? Or attempt to add something? Don't see anybody. All right, I will now close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back. Presentation, discussion, and public hearing, consideration of resolution number 25-22. Nicholas.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm Nick LeFwitch, Senior Planner for the City of Apache Junction. Tonight, I'll be presenting the case information for Sunt Construction. There are two cases. There is P-2510 GPA, which is the Major General Plan Amendment, and there is P-2511PZ, which is a rezoning by plan development of the subject property. Just to note, because this is a rezoning comprising over 10 acres, changing the land use category, whether it was residential to commercial, whether it was residential to industrial, commercial to industrial, any change like that over 10 acres requires a Major General Plan Amendment, which must be approved by resolution. And that is why the item has been broken up into the two items tonight. So Sunt has requested that in order to build a new construction manufacturing facility with office facilities and training offices, they have requested the rezoning of these two parcels, approximately 36.6 net acres, from RSGR, general rural low-density, single-family detached residential, to B5PD, industrial by plan development. And again, as part of that, with the Major General Plan Amendment, it will modify the land use map from commercial to light industrial slash business park and industrial. This is the current zoning context of the property. I will note that the property has always been undeveloped. It is currently zoned, the general rural low-density residential, but that is more of a holding pattern zoning for a lot of these large parcels that had never been developed, that kind of holdovers from when the state and county first sectioned everything off. Property is surrounded by industrial uses to the west and to the south. To the north, we have the US 60. And then on the east side, we have some commercial properties with the Horn Auto Complex. And Horn is, as the current owners have noted, that they did not have plans to develop this property specifically. And that's why they were looking to sell and engage Sunt, who is interested in buying and developing this property. And then we also have a manufactured home park to the west, to the east, sorry. Noted here is the general plan land use map. It reflects the same kind of land use patterns as the zoning just described. But again, as noted, there is a difference between the current zoning and the current general plan land use designation. But we find that the proposed request does comply with our general plan goals. So even though it is a conversion of commercial to industrial, we find that that industrial use brings a lot of employment opportunities. It supports our economic development goals, and I will get to more of those later on in the presentation. Although 36.6 net acres are proposed to be rezoned at this time, the development area of this first phase is just approximately nine acres. They are proposing this industrial building, inside of which there will be office facilities as well as some manufacturing facilities. Sunt is a national construction industry, and they are going to have this facility and the manufacturing they're in in order to be able to support their own operations. So whether it's manufacturing things like pipe, different items that they would use in the actual construction of the projects they're contracted to. And they have their team here tonight if they, if you would like to get further details on those matters. We had worked with their team in order to make sure that the city had good architecture, that it would be a good thing to see from the freeway as well as from, as you approach it from Tomahawk as well. And I will note that the west side, the plain one, is noted that way as it is slated for future development, future expansion of the building itself, and that they would like to get to, and that that would eventually be the interior of the building as well. The applicant has complied with all the necessary public notification and input requirements. As the Major General Plan Amendment is involved in this case, they went through an extended review process. There was two extra months that involved the neighboring cities and agencies and municipalities. And as an industrial rezoning, they also had an enlarged notification area. The applicant has complied with all of the necessary requirements. They held a neighborhood meeting on March 19th, at which point one, one neighbor, which was a neighboring business owner, attended and expressed support for the rezoning and development. Although this project has been under this longer extended review, notifying even more people, we've only received supportive comments and have not heard anything contrary to this time. So on June 24th, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5-0 unanimously to recommend the approval of P-2510 GPA and P-2511PZ, subject to the conditions of approval found in the staff report. And planning staff also supports this recommendation. We find that it does comply with our city's general plan goals. It is a good infill opportunity that promotes the, we, we need a lot more industrial land uses, we need a lot more employment land uses here in the city. And one of the general plan goals was to have those along the US 60 corridor, which facilitates transportation, it facilitates a lot of economic development. And we find that this proposal matches all of that perfectly. And with that, the applicant also And with that, the applicant also has a presentation tonight, and they and myself are available to answer questions.
Okay, so applicant want to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Brennan Ray, twenty-three, twenty-five East Camelback, here on behalf of Sunt Construction. If you're not familiar with Sunt, they are a one hundred and thirty-four-year-old company that specializes in transportation, industrial, building concrete, and a variety of other things. What's unique is that Sunt is entirely employee-owned. Thirty-five-plus-hundred employees actually own the company, which is a little bit unique. And they, over the course of their existence, have developed into a world-class company that's certainly very excited about this opportunity. From the minute they first came to the city, we have been helped and supported very closely from the city manager's office to economic development to the planning department, and we're very grateful for their opportunity that they've given us to work with them, to create what we believe is going to be an exciting development in the exact location that you would want industrial development along the US sixty corridor. I'll be kind of brief in my comments tonight, just to touch on a few things. We're all familiar with the site. This, as staff indicated, is the first phase, which is a roughly sixty-five thousand square-foot building that'll be state-of-the-art, that's going to have some onsite manufacturing, where we're going to do pipe pool, pipe spools, structural pipe supporters, and other kind of small industrial needs. And as staff indicated at the work session, one of the things that they're really excited about is an opportunity to provide training, training for their employees to be able to come on this site. As was mentioned, there is an office component to this facility that is greater than is typically found in industrial buildings like this one. As we look at it, and this is going to address one of the questions that I heard that came up in the study session, if you look at the site, you can see there's very delineation of green vegetation. That is because there is a wash that runs through the middle of this site. And so what you will see very purposefully, we have to take in consideration the design of that wash. That's why you see on this exhibit, there's a property line, then a little gap before you start seeing the landscape in the building area. That's because of where that wash runs, and we are taking that into account in the design of it. But I know there was some discussion last night about landscaping along the north. We're okay complying with the city's standards and requirements for landscaping along the north, as well as everywhere else. The building perspectives, staff's done a great job working with us, I won't go into details about that. But one of the things that I did want to do, because the question came up, what are you guys building in this facility? And these are some examples of some of the end results of the product that is produced out of it. This is a trestle with mechanical spools. There'll be, you know, pipes for water treatment skids, you've got pipe support and then pipe spools as well. So that's the, just to give you a flavor of what is going to be manufactured in this facility. And I know that last night, and I'll be a little bit preemptive as well, there was a question about landscaping continuing south in the undeveloped portions of it. I very purposefully and normally would not bring a detailed grading and drainage plan to present to you, but what you can see on the right-hand side of the screen, it effectively is a topographical map that shows contour lines, and you can see that there's a lot of lines outside of our property, that as you look at it, that are affecting that. You can see kind of running underneath the road, a culvert that is to convey that water as we continue south. And so as we look at it, again, I know the comment was made about, hey, would you guys consider landscaping along cactus as you head further south? We'd absolutely love to, however, we also don't want to needlessly spend money that could potentially be ripped out, especially when we don't know the design of it. We have not engineered it, we don't know the impact. You can kind of see at a diagonal from the northeast to the southwest, a little faint green line, that's kind of where that wash continues. And so as we get into the engineering plans and details, I don't know where it's going to go, we have to accommodate for it. I don't know if we push it over to the cactus road frontage. I don't know where it goes, because obviously we want to maximize the buildable area in the future as we look at it. And so certainly understand the request, or the comment that was made about, hey, would you guys consider it running down there? We'd love to, we just, again, there's too many unknowns for us to say, hey, let's go put some trees in there and hope they grow up good, and then need to come back and rip them out eventually down the line because of the extensive drainage and water that flows through this site. So again, I wanted to be brief. I've got Alex Sharland and Kate with me from Sunt tonight. Again, we're very excited for this opportunity and look forward to making this a world-class development consistent with Sunt's reputation. Again, grateful to work with staff from the top to the bottom. You guys have an A-plus team out here, and it's always a pleasure to come out and work with them. And so we would request your approval in accordance with staff and the planning commission's unanimous recommendations. Happy to answer any questions you might have, and if I'm unable to, certainly I can walk back and we can grab Alex, and he might be able to answer questions that I cannot.
Any questions?
No.
Brian, do you have any questions? Guess not.
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will now close, or open, excuse me, the public hearing. There is a three-minute warning that you will hear. Please state your name and address for the record.
I guess I'm here to entertain you tonight. Andre Meek, thirteen-twenty-seven South Bel Air here in AJ. Mr. Mayor, council, you look at this project, and to the east of it, you got the Ford dealer. To the west of it, you got CAT and Sunwest Reynolds. Then further west, you got the U-Haul. I mean, it's just a perfect fit for that area, and, you know, we can use the employment, we can use the tax space, we can use everything that they're offering. And, you know, as far as that wash, you could, you know, really do a mitigation with, just like they did right there at Broadway and Tomahawk at the housing project there, they got that big rock line channel that would work just perfect down there, and, you know, do something like that. But yeah, I'm all for it, I think it'd be a real good fit for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. I guess I have a couple of questions as far as what kind of chemicals they're going to be using, considering it's their, like, metal-type factory, and the reason why is because we already have a metal factory on Guadalupe and Meridian area that has cancer-causing agents, three percent above EPA standards.
I don't know if there's going to be any kind of a chemical issue whatsoever. I've been around the pipe industry all my life, and there's no chemical dumping or chemical mixtures for welding pipe.
Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion?
For both of them or individual?
Individual.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-five-twenty-two, the Major General Plan Amendment Case P twenty-five-ten GPA, to amend the general plan land use map for parcels one-zero-two dash two-zero dash zero-zero-eight A and one-zero-two dash two-zero dash zero-zero-eight C, from commercial to light industrial business park and industrial, be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Presentation, discussion, and public hearing for consideration of ordinance number fifteen-sixty-five. Nicholas, second one.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the same item, in this case, the ordinance itself is to have the rezoning take effect with the first part, the resolution just passed being the general plan amendment.
Any questions from the council? Do you have a question?
No, you're going to do a public hearing.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I will now open the public hearing. There's a five-minute time limit, or a one-minute warning you will hear. Please state your name and address for the record. Anyone want to speak on this part of it? And I see no movement. I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Who?
Either side.
I move that ordinance number fifteen-sixty-five be read by the title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second. Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Ordinance number fifteen-sixty-five, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for the property described in rezoning case P dash twenty-five dash eleven dash PZ, request by Sunt Construction Incorporated, represented by Brennan Ray of Ray Law Firm, from general rural law density, low-density signal, single-family detached residential, RS dash GR, to industrial by plan to development, B dash five PD, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
Okay, do I have a motion for the ordinance number fifteen-sixty-five?
Your Honor. Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fifteen-sixty-five is read by the city clerk be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Okay, I'm going to skip all the way down to the call to the public. I'd like to remind everyone that the call to the public is courtesy and not required by law. It's a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Request to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues will be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Underneath the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in a discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly in order to place this matter on a future agenda for a council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker. And I have one. Donna Carr.
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. First, I would like to apologize to the people and the council for misinformation that I had gotten about that nine thousand or so acres out by Florence Junction for the solar company. It did not get squashed yet. It's still in the works, they're trying to get squashed. So I apologize for that. One of the other things is, I guess I have a question as far as when the zoning board votes five to two against something, and other people as well as myself felt that the council had invited a mess of people here to be for the apartment complexes, and I did talk to Robert earlier before the meeting, and he said, no, it was not the city, these people came on their own accord, so. But just wondering why we bother to have a zoning board if basically the city council has the right to make the decision in the end? So, and one of the other things, and I did talk to Joel before the meeting about this, is I was looking up this information on the schools here in Apache Junction, and it says that if you offer a kindergarten class, that you should, as well as a full-day kindergarten class, offer a half-day kindergarten class, by law. But the Apache Junction School District does not offer that, and I don't know why, considering the fact is, is most kindergarten kids, a lot of them don't go to the preschool, they come straight from home and start kindergarten, and to throw them into a full day, it's sort of like throwing somebody into a full day of work. So if you guys could look into why they're not offering half-day kindergarten classes in Apache Junction, it would be truly appreciated. Thank you.
Well, that one you need to address to the school board. Okay, any comments from other comments? I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you for attending.